Gosh, twenty-five, twenty-six years now. My wife and I actually moved to Fairbanks when we just got married, and it's been great being here and, you know, seeing Fairbanks again and reconnecting. And I just want to thank everyone for giving me this opportunity.
Mr. Minor?
Thank you. I'm Luke Minor. I'm currently the Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Schools here at Fairbanks. I have a lot of experience in Fairbanks for the last two years.
At Fairbanks, we just got married.
I've been in Alaska for eighteen years and I spent my whole career here. I started my career on the Lucian Eastboro School District where I taught history and government. It's been great being here. I also served as a technology coordinator at the school. When I was there, I coached volleyball and basketball.
Mr. Minor?
Several. Thank you. So Luke Minor, I'm currently the Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Schools. After my teaching career there at Sandpoint, I moved into their district office for three years. It was a very small school district, so I got to learn a lot of different things, which has prepared me well on my career. I was the assessment director, activities coordinator, technology director, and teaching and learning coordinator. Then moved to Fairbanks, where I worked for Uqantway County School District for eight years. I was the Director of Technology in the School Operations, oversaw several schools that had been in correspondence with our program, and ensured our schools within the community, they did things. One of my proudest moments for Uqantway-
We have audio now.
... district is the High School E-Sports Program in the state. That is now a sectioned activity with the FASAA. One of the big reasons I did that is I wanted to connect the students that were already connected to their school communities, to something important to the school. Sixty percent of the students that participated in that first season of E-Sports had never participated in any activity. So activities are a big part of my leadership, and I'm going to ensure that schools are connected to their communities, students are connected to their school communities.
Thank you. Mr. Scallon?
Good evening. My name is Ryan Scallon. I first just want to start by thanking both the Fairbanks community as well as the community who has welcomed me and so have been chosen around all the great schools, in particular the whole of Sandy. First and foremost, I'm a father of three, and I have a twelve-year-old, a nine-year-old, and a six-year-old. And my work in education for the last twenty years has been about making sure that every student has the opportunity to receive a great education, the same type of education I receive. And so part of that is about making sure that the education my students receive has been great. And also, I've worked in a number of underserved communities and making sure that they receive also the same type of world-class education that I want for my children and all children. I am currently an Assistant Superintendent in the School District of Philadelphia, and I'm proud of the fact that if you asked folks there about my leadership style, they would describe me as an innovative, collaborative, results-oriented leader. I currently work with forty schools. These schools range from some of our highest-performing magnet schools to schools in the Justice Associated Programs, work-based learning schools, as well as competency-based, sort of the full gamut. And what I've learned in that work is that there's not one school that works for every student, but there should be a school that every student can get to and be successful at. And making sure that students have that opportunity to really be in a school where they feel like they're part of the community, they're getting the academics that they need, and they're getting supported in post-secondary is what I'm really committed to.
Thank you. And we had a little technical error right at the beginning, so actually Mr. Hauser's, the sound didn't record for that, especially for our listening audience. So, Mr. Hauser, could I ask you again to give your opening statement?
Sure, absolutely.
And I'll repeat it just so our listeners know the question. Please introduce yourself and tell us who you are.
All right. My name is Frank Hauser. I'm actually an Alaska educator. I've been an Alaska educator for twenty-five years. I actually graduated from the public school system in Alaska, from the Mattsu Valley. And I actually went to the University of Alaska System, all three main branches of the University of Alaska System. I actually got my teaching endorsement here at UAF, you know, and if it wasn't for that, I wouldn't have been able to be a teacher. I'm currently the Superintendent of the Sika School District, mid-sized district in southeast Alaska. Before that, I spent twenty-three years in the Anchorage School District. I was the principal of Service High School, the third-largest comprehensive high school in the state of Alaska. When I was at service, I was recognized as the Alaska Principal of the Year. Before that, I spent six years in the Anchorage School District Office, but also had the opportunity to be an assistant principal at middle school, high school, and a K-12 open optional program. You know, I actually have had a number of opportunities because I started out as an itinerant teacher, and that gave me a lot of opportunities to go around and visit and work in nearly every neighborhood in a large urban district. And really kind of informed me my K-12 perspective and the importance of K-12 education and the continuum for students that are working through the K-12 public education system. On a personal level, I am a competitive, I've been a competitive swimmer pretty much my whole life and was formerly competed, and it's still an important part of my life. I actually met my wife while we were lifeguarding at the Alaska Club, and we still swim regularly on a master's team. And I also, a little bit more about myself, I was, when I was a student at UAF, studied martial arts and got into martial arts, and I've been studying martial arts my whole life, and it's something that's really important to me. My wife and I moved to Fairbanks when we were just married, and it's great to be back, getting an opportunity to visit the community again, and I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. And I'm just going to do a quick sound check. It sounds like we're good. All right. So for the next ten questions, we're actually going to do one minute fifteen seconds for each. And we're going to be starting with Mr. Minor at this time, and the question that we have is from the military community. "Fairbanks is on a clear trajectory for growth and inbound military families, which constitutes a significant portion of that growth. How should the school district address students who come from all over the world at differing levels of academic progress and keep them from being penalized or set back based on joining a system that they have not previously been a part of?" So, Mr. Minor?
First off, I want to thank the military community. Here in Fairbanks, we have an amazing military community, and I just thank you for all your sacrifices. This is something that I feel passionate about. Twenty-five percent of our students are military-connected, and we follow the military compact very strictly.
I work on a regular basis with Georgia Sandgren and some of our SLOs on ensuring that we provide flexibility for students coming into our system. We want to ensure that they're supported and that their credits transfer and that we do everything we can to ensure that they have a successful transfer into our schools. I'm also very proud of our schools. Several of them earned the Purple Star School designation. That's something that we worked through that process together last year. And as part of that process, schools set up specific supports for incoming military students. Part of that is the transfer credits that come in, but a lot of that is the social structures that you set up at the school. And so having teams of students that are available to welcome our military students coming into the schools is something that we've set up.
Mr. Scallon?
Yeah, similarly, I'd like to start by thanking the military for their service and their commitment. And I think that for this, we really need to start by building on the strengths of the students that are coming, right? It is a wealth of experience that students and military families bring from having been able to experience education in a number of different settings, and so the skills they bring are something that we should really build on. And I think we need to do that by being intentional about what are the supports and structures that we have in place to support military family students. And so I think about starting with the liaison and then making sure that we have intentional ways of connecting those students to the school community, whether that is thinking about what the advisory looks like, the enrichment period, the connection to extracurriculars, but first making sure that there's a connection to the school community. The second is around academic supports, so we want to make sure that our academic program continues to push and support students and that they have the aligned support, and doing that through the liaison and that connection. And then the third is about making sure that we have the support for all students, and particularly military families, around social and emotional health and making that connection to a new school community.
Thank you. Mr. Hauser?
Yeah, I also would like to thank the military for their service. For me, one of the things that is key and foundational is just support, making sure that the families have the support and the students know that they have the support of not just the buildings that they're going to school in, but the whole district is behind them. And that really starts with working closely with the post-in base commanders and the leadership there, having communication with the families. When I was a curriculum assistant principal at Diamond High School, we had a number of military families come through. And again, the experiences that they had, how do we look at being supportive of those experiences, providing alternative ways for credit, but also making sure that if there are any credit requirements that are in place, how can we support the students to make sure either they have similar credits that can line up with those credit requirements, looking at providing dual credit opportunities for them, but making sure that the supports are there to, you know, be sometimes creative, but also work with the families to find, you know, the students, what that work that they're coming into the school with, the transcripts and the credits, and making sure that they know that we will find a solution and we will make it happen. In Sika, I worked closely with the Coast Guard families that come through to make sure that they have the support and have roundtable discussions with them and meet regularly with the families to make sure that, you know, we are supporting the students both from an academic but also from a social-emotional side with the families.
Thank you. Our next question comes from the Education Support Staff perspective. Drawn-out negotiations, COVID, high turnover, open positions, and deep cuts have impacted educator, indeed all staff, morale. Realizing money might not be available to address some of these concerns. How would you engage with ESA and FEA to improve morale? That's the Education Support Staff Association and the Fairbanks Education Association.
Research consistently shows that the number-one most important factor to improving student outcomes are the adults in their classroom, the teachers and the school professionals that are there. And so we need to make sure that we are doing everything we can to help them be successful. And so beyond finances, there's pieces around treating teachers and treating staff like they are the professionals that they are. And so that means being really intentional about what are the asks that we have staff do and where do we have agency and voice and decision. I'm a firm believer that the best decisions for students occur by those closest to the classroom. And so making sure that we respect the professionalism of our staff, making sure that we give them voice and agency within their work, I think is really important.
Thank you. Mr. Hauser?
So for me, one of the things I think is very important when we're going through, all the things that were listed here, COVID, the high turnover rate, the challenge that we faced, it has put a lot of strains on, you know, the districts across the state of Alaska. For me, one of the things that I feel very strongly about is just continuing to help, open communication, making sure that, you know, as we go through and support our students, we have to support each other too. And, you know, frequent visits to schools. I started many years ago, and my career started, let's be frank, meetings, where I'd go out to the buildings and I'd sit down and have conversations with the staff. And it was just a time, not talking about academics, not talking about, you know, evaluations, anything like that. It was just an opportunity for us to sit down and talk about what are the needs, what do we have to focus on, what supports do you need in the classroom, what do your kids need, and really just having open, honest communications. You know, couldn't always solve all the problems, but at least we got them out in the open, we were able to talk about them, have a clear idea of where we were going, and what can I do to help support you, what can the district office do to support you? The principals, bringing everybody together, understanding what some of the needs were, and being able to find those solutions together collaboratively and cooperatively, because at the end of the day, it comes down to the students. What do the students need, and how do we do that? And the best way of meeting students' needs is by making sure that our support staff and our teachers and our principals have what they need to be successful.
Thank you. Mr. Minor?
I had a conversation with one of our teachers recently, and she said something pretty profound that teachers don't want self-care or self-help strategies from administration, they want us to take things off their plate. And that's something that I've been working hard to try to do, is to create efficiencies and to try to look at ways that we can take specific things off of our educators' place from an administrative standpoint. One of those recently was the mandated trainings that all of our educators have to do. There were some assessments at the end that we felt weren't best-serving our educators, and so that was one area that we could take something off our teachers' plates. We're also looking at our evaluation structure to see if there's efficiencies there. I believe that, you know, there's a number of components that we could take away from our evaluation system and still keep the same amount of rigor for our evaluation system. I also firmly believe in shared decision-making with our teachers. That's something that I've done throughout my tenure here. That's something that I've done throughout my tenure here with the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District. And as we're making big decisions, the teachers and ESSA staff members need to be a part of those conversations.
Thank you. So our next question, and we'll be starting with Mr. Hauser. This is from the teaching perspective. Given the national growing shortage of qualified educational staff, teaching support, and administration, how would you showcase our district to attract and retain the very best qualified educators? Mr. Hauser?
Thank you. For me, the best way that I've found to showcase and highlight a district is by showcasing the students and the programs that the teachers and the staff are putting out there. And so one of the most important things that I would do coming in is just trying to make sure that we get the word out there, having the conversations, being able to, you know, highlight the academics but also the career technical education side of it, and showing the wonderful things that, you know, really be a part of the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District. These are the great things that we're doing in this district. These are the great things that are happening for our students and for our staff, being able to provide continued opportunities for growth and, you know, not only for the students but for the staff as well. I think people want to go to a place that they feel connected with, that they feel excited about. And so how do we continue to bring that excitement back to the district? And it's through, you know, just having conversations about highlighting and celebrating, you know, the good things that are happening in our, in the buildings and making sure that, you know, we're supporting, you know, the staff's ability to not only, you know, be there and have fun in the education and support the kids and engage with them, but actually being able to, you know, afford to do that. And, you know, looking at working and advocating at the state and the national level two about, you know, how are we supporting the livable wage and, you know, just making sure they have the supports.
Thank you. Mr. Minert?
I would echo some of the sentiments that Frank shared in terms of clear communications and showcasing what our students are doing. We have amazing things happening in each of our schools every single day. And as superintendent, I would really enhance our communications department and continue to grow what they're producing and putting out for folks to see the amazing things happening in our schools. I would also connect with schools of education around the country that are working with pre-service teachers to create an internship pipeline to Alaska. One of the great things, once pre-service teachers come up to Alaska, we see a high percentage of them staying. And so connecting early and often with schools of ed across the country will be very important. I also think just a grassroots social media campaign could go a long way. Fairbanks is an amazing community, it's the best community in Alaska, and Fairbanks sells itself. I mean, people want to move here and I think we need to show the great things that are happening here in Fairbanks.
Thank you. Dr. Scallon?
I agree with many of the things that have been shared. I would say as a headline, I think our best recruitment strategy is a really strong retention strategy. And it's about making sure that our staff love working here and are helping to spread the word. And so I think when teachers feel supported, when that support is in high-quality professional development, when that isn't about being treated like a professional, they are willing to then go out and sell and recruit for Fairbanks. And so if we really want to become a school district of choice, an employer of choice, we need to start by thinking about our best retention strategies. Beyond that, I think it comes down to thinking about what is your pipeline? And what is your pipeline of teachers? And how do you get creative solutions on that? As one example, I work now closely with Temple University and making sure that we do a number of recruitment events with their pre-service teachers for the teachers in my network. And so before they're even out there looking for a job, they know that the schools they want to work with are in my network. And then we also have a school that has just started a CTE or a career pathway for aspiring teachers. What better way to get them hooked than when they're in high school, realizing the power of teaching and wanting to stay in it?
Thank you. So our next question is coming from the principals' perspective. Over the past few years, the district has continued to cut employees. We have larger classes with fewer support staff, and it seems like more duties are put on everybody's shoulders every year. Under your leadership, what will the district do to ensure that students get what they need to be successful while also making sure that all employees feel valued and are not overloaded with new responsibilities? And we'll start with Mr. Minert.
I think this is where superintendent in the school district can get creative. If we continue to do the same thing we've always done, we're not, we're going to get the same results. And so one of the things I pride myself in my career is being creative and offering new opportunities for students. I have a long history of growing virtual learning options for students, correspondence options for students, different distance learning options for students within the district. And I think we're going to need to rely on some of those strategies in the future, particularly as class sizes do get larger and some classes get cut. We've already started those conversations between schools of having distance, different distance learning options between schools. I think we also need to look at when we're building our CTE programs within our schools is having specific schools focus on specific CTE pathways. And that way, we're not duplicating efforts among multiple schools.
Thank you. Dr. Scallon?
So I appreciate this question because it asks both about the balance of the level of work that is on everybody's shoulders, as well as making sure that we keep students and student outcomes at the forefront and making that really important. I'm proud of the fact that in my work now, I have really strong partnerships with both our principals' union and our teachers' union, because we've come together and talked about potential solutions, because we also face similar challenges where there's more than we can just do on our own, and so we've needed to get creative and we've needed to talk about that. What that has started with is making sure that we know what our goals are as a community and as a network. And so we're able to focus on what we think is the most important work. The second piece is around partnerships. There are a lot of folks out there that are committed to seeing students successful in Philadelphia, in Fairbanks. And so part of the work is about figuring out how do we leverage those partners in our work. And then the third is very similar to what Mr. Minert said, which is, we can't just continue to do what we used to do. COVID really challenged us to think differently. And in this space, about what we do, we need to think differently and not just continue what we were doing, but ask if there are better ways to do something.
Thank you. Mr. Hauser?
So I think for me, the most important thing as we go through, we're looking at the challenges that, you know, are being faced under my leadership. I work closely and collaboratively with, you know, the Principals' Association, with the Teachers' Association, Support Professionals Association, really trying to identify what the needs are, what are some of the challenges that we're facing, and what are some of the, you know, the strains that are being put on. One of the things I work closely with in the SICA School District is building on our school business partnerships, working closely with our SICA Tribe of Alaska to, how can we find supports, bringing in and working with SICA Tribe of Alaska to provide tutoring support for our students, making sure that, you know, they have the supports available for students, but also making sure that they're working collaboratively with the teachers to make sure that the teachers aren't being overwhelmed, you know, having to provide extra support time after school. And then trying to just kind of broaden those opportunities for the students. The other thing that I've worked really hard at in the SICA School District is grants. We've been able to expand out some of our grant options, dual credit options, and making sure that, you know, while we are challenged across the state with funding, we're still able to look at creative ways to provide opportunities for students through grants and other partnerships that we have, so we're not overwhelming our staff.
Thank you. Our next question, we're going to be starting with Dr. Scallon, and this comes from the Chamber of Commerce. About 2,489 people aged 15 to 29 left the Fairbanks North Star Borough between 2015 and 2020, according to the State Labor Department. What is the school district's role in connecting students to opportunities in Alaska?
So in the last question, I started to talk about this idea of partnerships and thinking about where there are partnerships and where there are opportunities. And this is a great sort of follow-up of where there is. I think as a district, our first responsibility is to make sure that we're preparing students to graduate where they are able to make a choice of their choosing. And so whether that is a connection to a living wage job, a post-secondary experience in a college, joining the military, or something else, right? We want to make sure that our graduates leave us ready. The piece with that, though, is really thinking about what do students experience in high school that gives them connections to internships, to job opportunities, that also get them to experience all that's available in this area and all the rich opportunities so that they may make that choice to stay. And when they do, that they are a successful employee and they are effectively contributing to that business as well.
Thank you. Mr. Hauser?
Yeah, so for me, in my mind, as I look at this, one of our primary roles is making sure that we're educating students and preparing them to be and to work and to move into Alaska's future workforce. And so one of the things that I look at when I'm looking at supporting our students so they can go out and really connect with and provide opportunities in Alaska, is making sure that we're connecting with each individual student's interests and needs, different programs, whether it's academic or whether it's career technical education, making sure there's diverse opportunities of programs that students can find and get engaged in and be passionate about, so they are able to move into the workforce and find something they would want to, you know, do. I tell the story about a student of mine who academically wasn't very excited about going to classes but loved welding. And he just, you know, just did everything he could. And he has now just got his journeymen's license and spent six months down in Antarctica and is just flourishing. And being able to provide opportunities where students can connect and engage and be able to, you know, kind of transition out of school with the skills that they need and be able to be successful in the workforce. That's what we're really focusing on, that's what we want to provide for students. And programs like that, like the CNA program that I just learned about here at North Pole High School, you know, Certified Nursing Assistance, those are the great programs that help us build that workforce.
Thank you. Mr. Minert?
One of the things I'm very proud of, of the school district, is the industry partnerships that we built within the last several years. Those partnerships continue to get stronger and stronger through our CTE department and our principals. Just recently, Principal Spillane of North Pole High talked to our Chamber of Commerce here in North Pole and was able to create new partnerships and new internship experiences or opportunities for our students. And so really, when I think about this question and I think about preparing our students, we really do need to provide opportunities for them to be college and career-ready. Part of that is providing robust CTE programs and pathways that end in certifications. That's something that we've worked on tirelessly the last few years, is ensuring that we don't have separate CTE courses that don't lead to certifications. We're also active in offering career explorations and intensives in the summer times. One of my favorite experiences I've had as an assistant superintendent was visiting the laborers' union over a summer internship and seeing our students participating in that program. And they were going to go into the laborers' union the very next week and make over $30 an hour.
Thank you. So our next one, we're going to be starting with Mr. Hauser, and this comes from the Fairbanks North Star Borough perspective. What is your approach to budget development with the community?
So my approach to the budget development with the community really circles around transparent and cooperative. I think it's really important that when we talk about, you know, the budget for the school district, we talk about, you know, how the money is being used, where the resources are going, are we good stewards of those resources? And part of that is just being transparent, making sure that the community, making sure that, you know, everyone that's, you know, looking at that budget knows where the money's going and where those resources are, you know, going towards and ultimately benefiting the students. As the superintendent of SICA School District, I've worked closely with the SICA Assembly to make sure that we have worked collaboratively on the needs of the district and making sure that we continue to provide a strong school district with great opportunities and programs for students. When challenges arise, how can we meet and address those challenges? The Assembly just recently passed an ordinance taking sales tax and, for marijuana sales, and applying it towards student activities associated travel. And that was something I worked closely with the Assembly on, making sure that we found a creative way and talked about how that money that is being generated will support student activities and travel and being completely open and transparent through that and working through it together and working collaboratively and cooperatively so that trust is there.
Thank you. Mr. Minert?
I think starting the budget process early with clear communication on where the school district stands is critically important. One of the things that I often see happen is that school districts wait too late in the school year to start those conversations with the community. And by that time, you don't have the time to put in the research or have the conversations that are necessary to put real, actionable plans in place. And so as the superintendent here in Fairbanks, I would start those conversations early in the fall and really hear stakeholder feedback on what they would like to see in their schools and what the priorities are for the budget. I'd also encourage advocacy on the part of increasing state funding. It's a huge issue with having flat funding for over seven-plus years. And tell the story of what happens when we have flat funding and the services that we're no longer able to offer as a school district.
Thank you. Dr. Scallon?
I think as the superintendent, part of your role is to really think about how the decision process plays out. And one of the guiding principles that I have, that I learned from a mentor, is no decision for me without me. And so it's really important that when we're talking about difficult financial decisions that will have to be made in the borough, that stakeholders, community members are around that table, providing input and feedback. That feedback can come in a number of ways. So from the outside, it looks like the district has a history of using committees as a way to get voice from board, central office, schools, and community. And so one is thinking about what is that structure? The second is about making sure we're going out and engaging the community in these conversations and not just relying on them coming to a budget work session, but that we're going out and seeking that feedback. And even where we can't get that feedback, you know, face-to-face, is offering up other options and ways to get feedback through surveys, through social media, et cetera. And so I go back to, when we're making difficult decisions, it is about making sure that voices and stakeholders are at that table and have a voice.
Thank you. Next, we'll be starting with Mr. Minert, and this comes from the central office perspective. Sometimes, there can be an us-versus-them mentality between schools and the district office management. What specifically would you focus on to develop a shared belief that we are all on the same team, working for kids, and build a collaborative bridge between the district leadership and the schools?
This is something I'm proud of with my work the last three years with the school district, is that you need to show up. You need to show up at the school, you need to show up for the teachers, and you need to show up for the principals. One of the things as superintendent that I'll impress upon our team is provide relentless support to our schools through services and clear communication. It will be my expectation that executive directors and folks working in the ADC regularly visit schools and help schools and substitute at schools. We are facing a huge sub-s shortage here in Fairbanks, and our teachers in classrooms and our students need support, and that's something that the ADC can help with. Once you are in the schools and you completely understand what's happening day-to-day, then you can provide better supports and services for our students and staff.
Thank you. Dr. Scallon?
Yeah, I think this is a common problem that districts face with a central office-versus-school mentality. And I think the key in where I've seen people be successful is where they take the time to build up trust and break down those barriers. And part of that is just about proximity. And so I'm proud of the fact that across all of my schools, they know who I am, they know my name is Ryan, they know when I walk into a building, because I'm often present in buildings, to help break down that. And my network team is the same, right? We think it's really important that we start not by telling schools what to do, but we support them in doing what they know is best for students. And so for me, it is about making sure that we are providing support and effective support. On top of that, this idea of like closing down barriers and closing the gap, we need to think about cross-functional teams, right? So before we make a decision at the central office about what a school needs to do, we need to make sure that we have ways that we're capturing student voice, family voice, teacher voice, and leader voice, and so that we're making sure that those decisions are supported and effective.
Thank you. Mr. Hauser?
Yeah, I think it really comes down to focusing on communication. It was, you know, said earlier that, you know, as we go through and we're working on trying to establish that shared belief, it's about that communication, being present, making sure that the district office staff are in the buildings weekly. You know, one of the things I really, that means, one of the benefits and the greatest things about my job is being able to go into and visit schools and talk to the staff. It's about being present, it's about... It's about being present, it's about being active and making sure that the staff know that you're there to support them every single day and they are comfortable coming and talking to you. They know you, but you know them too. You know their names, you know kind of what they're teaching, you know their families, and making sure that they know that it's, you're all there together to work towards the benefits and the needs of the students and the families. So, absolutely, you know, my district office staff would be visiting schools regularly and working in consultation with the staff to provide those needs, to make sure that they have the supports, to make sure that there is that shared belief. And that shared belief should revolve and really be centered around, you know, the mission statement and the goals of the district and making sure that we're all giving 100% to making sure that we're meeting those needs and working to fulfill those goals for the students.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll be starting with Dr. Scallon. And this comes from the student body. College and career readiness classes that we would like to take, such as EMT, fire safety, foreign languages, and multiple AP courses, are being cut due to increasing PTR tied to continual budget deficits. What will you do to maintain robust specialty programs in the midst of ongoing budget crises?
So, for me, this is a priority. I was a high school teacher, I was a high school principal, and when I think about my own kids and what I want them to experience, this is what I want them to experience, these kind of classes. When we walked around with the students today at North Pole, what they talked about were these programs. And the level of pride and ownership they felt for it was like really infectious and really touching. And so, for me, this is a priority about making sure that these programs exist, right? When I was a high school math teacher, I thought I was a pretty good algebra teacher, but I know most students didn't come to high school because they were excited about algebra. They came for their extracurriculars, they came for their classes like this, that they were really passionate about. And so, for me, there's a couple of things that we can really do to put this in place. One is going back to a question that was asked a while ago about partnerships with industry. In Philadelphia, we partner closely with our industry to make sure that they're also sort of lockstep with us around our CTE programs. The second is thinking about what is the funding that's available, that we may seek out for grants with employers, et cetera. And then, I think the third thing is just the honest, hard reality, which is that we're going to have to make some difficult financial decisions, and we need to make sure that these are prioritized in that.
Thank you. Mr. Hauser?
Yeah, so, I mean, as we step back, one of the things as we look at, as a sitting Superintendent, having been a principal, we've had to deal, and I've had to deal with some difficult decisions around credits. And one of the things I learned early on was how do we maximize some of our credits in looking at dual-credit opportunities? One of the things when I was a principal but also working on as a Superintendent, for example, you know, looking at an EMT class, how can we look at providing that EMT class but also providing a science credit for that class? We have to have core credits or requirements, we have to make sure that students meet those core requirements, but can we find ways to utilize some of these career technical education courses to also provide core credit opportunities and making sure that we're, you know, maximizing our FTE? I talked about partnerships earlier. Recently, just received a grant as a Superintendent from the SICA Heritage where we were able to provide science classes, life science classes, that were traditional ecological knowledge. And so, we are able to expand our science classes using grant funding and provide continued, you know, opportunities for students, but also looking at ways of bringing classes that were connecting students to place-based education, you know, hands-on experiential learning. And so, exploring opportunities as well as advocating, you know, for, you know, the funding to be able to have the adequate staffing in our buildings.
Thank you. Mr. Minor?
This is a tough one. This is where I would seek student voice. As you're starting to look at programs that are starting to go away, it shouldn't just be the adults in the room making the decisions. And so, I really want to hear from students on what are the courses that they want to take, what are the courses that they will benefit from? And then, that can help us prioritize the courses that we offer. I'm also a big supporter of the CTE additional FTEs we provide as a district. That's critically important for our schools, and that's something that would continue under my leadership. I think continuing to seek out alternative grant opportunities beyond Perkins to support our specific CTE pathways is something that we're going to need to continue to do as a district. And then, lastly, obviously, we've talked a little bit about this, but internships and partnerships, specifically partnerships with businesses in the district, are there specific things that our business partners can help us with? Can they sponsor a specific CTE program? Can they provide us with additional resources or materials for a class that could mutually benefit our students and their business?
Thank you. And Dr. Scallon?
I answered the question, I think, first.
I'm sorry. Yes. Sorry.
Technical difficulties, will you give a repeat?
I was keeping track of my check-offs. Okay, so, this one, we are going to start with Mr. Hauser. Okay, and this comes from the university community. How can the Fairbanks-Norstar Borough School District and University of Alaska Fairbanks partnership be leveraged to bring more financial stability to the Fairbanks-Norstar Borough School District?
I think that partnership should be just extremely strong and supportive, and I think not only leveraging to bring more of a financial stability, but more an academic opportunity for our students as well. You know, having those conversations about, you know, that close partnership, how do we provide opportunities for students to take classes for credit at the university level? How do we continue to provide those dual-credit opportunities, potentially bringing in, you know, some of our classes or having some of the classes at the high school level, being able to provide and account for university credit and being able to have some of those partnerships? Those are things that should be established and really should be worked towards. In the SICA School District, we work really closely with the University of Alaska Southeast and SICA to provide those dual-credit opportunities, provide opportunities for staff, for professional development, to take classes at UAF. But one of the things I've been working on, and I think is just an amazing opportunity, being so close to a wonderful university, which, of course, I'm an alumni of, is really working at that pipeline for, you know, teacher pipeline and looking at trying to provide a pair-professional teacher pipeline, but also a, you know, substitute teacher pipeline and coordinating and working with the university to provide those opportunities. It really is a win-win for both.
Thank you. Mr. Minor?
Happy to say that I believe our partnership with UAF is very strong and that we have a great working relationship with UAF and the UAF faculty. One of the things I've worked hard on in the last several years when joining the district is Norstar College. We're underway of expanding Norstar College, and that's actually a way that we are increasing the revenue to the school district because of the new funding formula for standing up a small school. You know, the great partnership we have with UAF, that would not have been possible without being able to take advantage of their expertise in terms of staffing on their side and working with us to create a really successful middle college program. We've also been working with UAF in terms of building up a pair-to-teacher pipeline and looking at creative ways to grow our own teachers. We have, you know, a teacher shortage here in Fairbanks, not unlike other places, and so, UAF is coming to the table and looking at creative solutions with us to try to solve that problem.
Thank you. Dr. Scallon?
I think this is about making sure that we have a mutually beneficial and supportive relationship between both the school district and the university. I'm proud of the fact that in Philadelphia, I've worked closely with Temple and with Drexel and with other secondary universities or secondary institutions to support the schools that I work with. We have a partnership with CCP that does a dual enrollment for many of our overage, undercredited students. It's just one way that we've gotten creative about that. And so, with the University of Alaska Fairbanks, it is about making sure that it's a mutually beneficial partnership. And the middle college program is a great example of that that you already have here. It's also thinking about how are we having a teacher pipeline that is both funneling students to the University of Alaska Fairbanks for certification, as well as doing their internships and student teaching in our schools. It's thinking about what are the other supports that they can provide to teachers and in-service and additional credits. And so, I think there's a number of ways that we can think about opportunities to get students and staff onto the University of Fairbanks, Alaska, or onto the University of Alaska Fairbanks, as well as them into our schools.
Thank you. And as we come to our last couple of questions, I want to just note that all three candidates answered the bonus question really well. When I made the mistake of order for the question, all three heads swiveled to me and said, "What are you doing, Tim?" So, nice job. Okay, so, our next question comes from the Alaska Native community. Fairbanks is a very diverse community. As a community leader, the Fairbanks-Norstar Borough School District Superintendent is looked upon to represent students of all races. Please tell us about your knowledge and any experience with the diverse populations, especially the Alaska Native community within our area. And we'll be starting with Mr. Minor.
This is somewhere where I have a lot of experience. I worked for rural school districts for 15 years that were primarily rural Alaska Native villages. And this is something I feel strongly about, and as Superintendent, I will meet regularly with FNATCC and Joyon leaders to better understand how we can meet the needs of our students. We do have a strong A&E program within the school district, and so, it's really working collaboratively together to figure out how we can best meet the needs of our native students. One thing in the past that I worked with that I would like to see come to our school district is revitalizing a native language program. YKSD has a very strong native language program, and that's something that I worked hard to help promote and establish, and something that I'd like to see come to Fairbanks.
Thank you. Dr. Scallon?
I've been in education for about 20 years, and in all those 20 years, I've served very diverse student populations, and in most cases, students who didn't look like me or come from similar backgrounds. And in each of those cases, my job has been about giving them voice, giving them agency, and giving them the tools to be successful. And so, that starts by not thinking that I know exactly what that community needs, but taking the time to listen and to understand their experiences and make sure that the supports we're putting in place match up with what they need. As an example of that, when I was a principal in the South Bronx, I worked at a school that was about a third English language learners, almost exclusively Spanish-speaking for Puerto Rico or the Dominican Republic. I don't speak Spanish, and I didn't have a ton of experience working with that population, to be honest. And I took the time to talk to their families, to talk to the students, and to talk to the teachers, to really understand what was needed to help them be successful academically. As a result of that engagement, we created sheltered English classes. As a result of that, we created bilingual educational programs for those students at the high school level, something that had not previously been there, and truthfully, something that I may not have thought of myself, but it came from that engagement.
Thank you. Mr. Hauser?
Well, thank you. So, I talked about my experience in the Anchorage School District, 23 years in the Anchorage School District, one of the most diverse districts in the nation. But also, I mean, that work that I had done at the Service High School in the Anchorage School District, working and recognizing each of our students' unique experiences and what they bring to our schools was something that I also took with me to the SICA School District, where 23% of our students identify as Alaska Native and 11% identify as two or more races. Part of what my focus is in working closely with our school business partners in SICA, the SICA Tribe of Alaska, to making sure that we're providing those supports for our families, making sure that we're providing programs that are culturally responsive, that's part of our mission statement, and making sure that we're working with those partners. And I talked about grants that are providing courses that, you know, that celebrate and bring in, you know, our abilities to recognize the importance of that traditional ecological knowledge and, you know, the experience of the land and working with our community and working with our tribal elders, and just making sure that we're providing those opportunities and recognizing and supporting our students in, you know, the land that we live on and really trying to support our students and partner with our local groups.
Great. Thank you. So, that's going to bring us to our closing. I do want to thank the candidates going through these questions. This is going to be a two-minute time for them. And really want to thank all of you for coming to our community, for thinking about our community and being here to let us get a chance to know you a little bit. So, closing statements, you'll have two minutes each. If you would share any concluding thoughts you would like to share with the community. And we'll start with Dr. Scallon.
Yeah, so, I started this evening by thanking you all and the community for the time today. I would like to echo that and just thank you for the warm welcome. It's funny, when you come to a community that is new to you, right? So, I spent about 19 years in and out of Philadelphia and the Northeast. And so, when I come here, people think of me as a Northeast person. And I think of myself as a Wisconsinite. And I know that no matter what, when coming here and working with this community and being a leader to support, I'm not going to be an Alaskan that grew up here and did that. And one of the things I can say with that, though, is I'm proud of the fact that in each community I've gone into and would do the same here, is I've taken the time to listen and learn when I've gone into that community, to really understand what is unique about that community, what are the strengths to build on and the opportunities, as well as where there's challenges that we need to be willing to address. On top of that, I'm proud of the fact that in each of those settings where I've gone into, we've been able to dream big and think about innovative and creative solutions that have seen student outcomes increase. Those student outcomes have increased whether you've looked at it through school climate, through test scores, or through other measures of student success. That didn't come from my own ideas, in all cases. It came from being a leader who takes the time to build a team that's everyone working on the same page and working for student outcomes. And, you know, as I started this, I hope that through all this, you've heard both my passion and interest in helping to support Fairbanks-Norstar Borough School District and the experiences I have that I think can be of value to the community and to provide that outside perspective. And so, I hope to have the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hauser?
Like I said earlier in my opening, when my wife and I just got married, we moved to Fairbanks. And I remember, we kind of tell the story about when we came here, we went to a vet. And actually, the vet said, you know, "Well, congratulations for being here, you know, it's such an amazing community." And that was something that we, you know, it just, it kind of caught us, but we totally agree with him. I mean, after just being here for a couple of years, it was just an amazing community. And for me and for her, it's just, it's about coming to a place that values education, that values supporting each other and being part of a community. And I got my teaching endorsement here at UAF, and it's kind of full circle, too, getting an opportunity to be here, to see the schools, to getting a chance to meet all of you and talking about education and the importance of education, the importance of supporting our students and supporting our staff, especially a staff that is so committed to doing what's best for kids. And, you know, all the staff that I've had a chance to meet today just in being here, it's been just such a wonderful experience. And, you know, being a part of that and being part of that community is something that I think is so wonderful and just what's happening now and, you know, the schools and what would be able to happen, you know, just coming here and being part of this. I'm really excited for just being here and seeing the amazing things that are going on in Fairbanks and really looking forward to, you know, tomorrow and seeing more of the amazing things that are taking place, too.
Thank you. Mr. Minor?
Well, I'd like to thank everybody from the North Pole High community that showed up tonight and those that traveled from Salta and other communities. Great to see you, lots of familiar faces in the room. Fairbanks is my home. Fairbanks is the place I love. Fairbanks is the place that I've chosen to raise my kids and marry my wife in. My wife teaches at University Park. As a third-grade teacher, my kids attend University Park, and so, this is a community I feel very strongly about. And as a leader, when you have your kids in the system, you're not only impacting your kids' lives, you're impacting every kid's lives. And so, every decision I make, I think of that in the back of my mind, is what would I want for my kids if they were sitting in that classroom? One of the things that I'll continue to do, even though that Fairbanks is my home, is listen and learn and collaborate. I'm a collaborative leader, and I think the room has the answers. We need to get in the room together and work collaboratively on solving the very challenging problems that are in front of us. And I just really look forward to the next couple of days to continue the process. You know, we spent some time in schools today. It's always great to be in schools, to see our students, to see the teachers, specifically getting into elementary schools, which I don't have the opportunity to do a lot. don't have the opportunity to do a lot, so I'm looking forward to that in the next couple days, and just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and watching us on the stream.
Okay, so, just a couple of reminders, both those who are listening and those who are here, we have the QR codes on the screen, they are also posted several places around the doors and sides here, and right in front, to give your feedback on our candidates. There is another public forum tomorrow night at West Valley High School at 5:30. They will be new and different questions from our stakeholders, so everything is, you'll keep learning, we'll keep learning. And really want to say thank you to our candidates, let's give them a round of applause, well earned. Okay, then that brings us to a close tonight. Again, thank you for those who came out. Feel free, those who are here, come on up front, say hi to the candidates, get to shake a hand, they're real people, so that's advantage of being in person. So, sounds good. Thank you.